I've never played that before.
My wife got into it and smashed herself on it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, open session, we have one amendment, uh, addition, correct?
Correct.
And that is the ATV kiosk in roads.
So, what's the Gavion bit? Okay, so we have for our Dog Lake Lane project up there, it's a federal grant. Kristy just stepped in, she's here, she's been working, we went out for quotes for Rock for our Gavion. We did receive three different quotes, out of the three, only one will make O dot spec. And so that basically would eliminate the other two, but this will be for action tomorrow. Our due construction came in, but they got back to us and theirs does not make O dot spec. The Niagara River one does make O dot spec, it's all listed right in there. And then the third one was from Friarmood and we have continued to try to get a hold of him for, see if he could guarantee they'd make O dot spec and he has not returned a call in over a week. So by doing new diligence, I would say that one's eliminated, but it doesn't have. We'll make that decision tomorrow, but assume-
We're chasing calls today.
Yeah, so that's what we have before us, it's a thousand yards, this is for Gavion Rock. That'll be put up on Dog Lake Lane, it'll be secure the outside radius of the corner just to pass the bridge or the culvert up there on that where that, so that rock face is on the outside, it'll be on the north side of the road to secure that, so we have a good shoulder. And so-
Now, typically we work Gavion, is the wire paid to put rock in?
Yes, absolutely, yep. And just to sort of tail on to that, tomorrow Kristy and I and others at the road department, Dusty and Delory will be meeting conference call with Atkins Engineering to shore up all kinds of things on the Dog Lake Lane. Kristy, is there anything you need to add on the Gavion? Okay?
Request for quotes, Northlake Bus Station, Denise, that's it. And you?
Correct, I've been working with our facility manager, Dave, to get three quotes for the building of our new rest barn in Northlake behind the annex to house our special transportation vehicles. He received, he asked for three, he got two back, the lowest bidder was on the wrong grant construction. So, his recommendation and mine as well is to go with the lowest bid. I've already said nine hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
And Denise, you have this course budget, but it's coming out of the state of-
State and federal.
Yeah.
Yeah, two different grants and then that's going to be from the state.
So, the location behind the annex, would that be between the annex and the restrooms or to the east?
Other side.
That's that's east.
Yeah, north south east side.
So, something just, and you know how I am, I always click with me at most, I don't know, time. State and federal funds, this has to be all pre-aven wage for the people that got each quotes. Now that is, does this make it-
According to our O dot rep, Jimmy.
No.
If the price is below the threshold?
Below the fifty thousand.
Okay, alright, perfect.
And that'd be addressed tomorrow too?
Correct.
Fleet, R Q.
So I went out on the fleet side of things, I went out for a request for quotes for the purchase of our two vehicles for the sheriff's department. And our lowest bidder was actually Hall and Lutter Company, almost a thousand dollars less than with yet. Butler Ford did not respond to our request.
So it's actually over a thousand dollars?
Nine hundred ninety-six dollars.
Well, on here it's twenty-nine, nine, nine, three and thirty-one, one, four.
Oh, because I took off the mirrors, that's right. Yes, you are correct.
Okay. So, they don't have mirrors?
No, they don't have mirrors, they just don't have the specific, actually it wasn't even mirrors, it's headlights.
So they don't have headlights?
Because, well, the story is the sheriff's department would like special-
Dark?
No, they want the high definition headlights installed from the factory, factory does not install those. So, we're going to stick with their normal headlights.
So, compared to the state pool, are we at the state pool or develop?
We're at state pool, because Lithia and Butler are both part of state pool.
Okay.
So that'll be discussed tomorrow. What we have for tomorrow is the U G B ordinance, so that's after today.
And we also have road vacation areas tomorrow.
Tomorrow, two of them.
Correct.
And these are one way out, a couple weeks ago, Silver Lake, undeveloped street in Silver Lake, and a block of parking area at Hunter House Springs.
Correct. The only other item I had was just a quick update on our vehicle auction. We did sell three of the five, we sold the trailer, the Camaro and the Expedition. We came in at just under fifteen thousand for those two vehicles, so we're pretty excited about how that process went. The sand rolls are currently relisted on the site and actually we're gaining speed this morning and it's only day two, so-
When's the closing date on that?
Um, ten days to the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
We did lower the minimum bid on it, so hopefully we get those done as well, that's it.
And the addition for today is ATV kiosks slash roads, Commissioner Winters here.
Yeah.
Acting Road Fisher.
Yeah, I spent the day yesterday with Wade and John online, Wade Bryant, looking at all the sites across Lake County for potential kiosk on county roads and map dispensary places. We came up with, I talked to him about every site, made sure that they stay back away from the back slope as far as they could for our graders and where they were accessible to put them on the B L Ns to the county roads where we meet. It was a good day. The challenge is that there's two roads within our system that we have closed. A section of them that we need to, I'm going to recommend that we open up would be the Little Lake Highway, it'd be the straight stretch from Christmas Valley Gas Station basically up to Black Hills Corner, to about a two mile straight section there, so that ATVs can get to market for gas, all that, based around the economic development site and all that. On the straight stretch, that's, safety seems to be fine.
And that's for ATV that's typically coming up from the south, picture Rock Pass, Black Hills, and then it would just need that one stretch to make it to-
Make it, yep, to make it in there, to build, to get fuel and food. The other one that we found the way through would be Fossil Lake Road, not Fossil Lake Road, but Thousand Springs Road, we went down there, there can be a kiosk down there. They can make a loop around to get it up to an ATV or from the RV place all the way to the store there, so there's no changes there. The other one would be out on, I call it the Sinks Road, I think it's technically probably Frederick Butte Road. Don't get confused with going out to Frederick Butte, this would be where you come off the Bunchegrass corner right down, and then you take a left like you're going to go out to Green Mountain. Need to, the one amendment we already done was five twelve D, I believe. So it needs to go from five twelve D on the, what's called Frederick's Creek Road over to the cracking ground. So the people that come in off Highway twenty are there, they're able to access and red rate and make it to the cracking ground route. That's an all gravel road. I didn't know that we had it closed all the way through Green Mountain, I thought it was Frederick Butte over that way. Deshutes County has Frederick Butte on their side, open all the way to Frederick Butte, and then we have it closed.
But this is more rules for the Haker project?
Yes, the, definitely Haker. But it makes sense to go ahead and open up this short section of it for recreation, for access, crack in the ground and build it, where that we had already amended for five twelve D. Makes sense to open that up. One reason why I had it as an addition today, to try to go ahead and get this as a decision tomorrow, is as the right, we have the ground, obviously, we're getting ready to do the kiosks, but more important than anything is before they spend a lot of money on maps, we want the maps to be accurate. Hawk roads and Hawk routes are open and closed, so they're going to expend quite a bit of money for these maps, and then they need to be changed in very near future. So, I'd like for both of you to research that, if you have questions, give Wade or John a call. And then I'd like to act on it tomorrow.
I'm comfortable familiar with it, but just for our discussion, when we went through our ATV destination, there was a mixed reception in the northern part of the-
Absolutely.
And they formed a committee to identify which was to be open or closed, and we accepted that into the ordinance. We need some type of communication outreach to as soon as possible, because they went through their effort and we need to respect that.
Okay, well, that's a very good point, I have not got a hold of that committee. I didn't know they were still in existence after we, we done that, it'd be very good to get back to them and ask, I doubt if they-
Just give them the rationale.
Do you remember who the head of that committee was?
Did he say it was foul?
Was it wrong? Was it wrong, Wilson?
I want to say it was wrong, but I have to double check it.
But it's just a courtesy thing, to let them know so it doesn't fly inside.
So, that may be a challenge for them to meet before tomorrow.
Maybe just a phone call to each one and tell them the rationale.
You'll build-
They may not agree, but at least it doesn't fly inside.
Yeah, yeah, well, I know there, I know one key person's going to have opposition, he's opposition to the whole thing up there.
Let's see.
And, but I know several people that's in support, it's sort of like you say, balancing out.
Yeah, just a courtesy notice.
Okay.
That's all the, the list?
Can I have a question, it's a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, what's the tentative schedule for filling the vacant home master position?
I actually had that on my liaison updates.
Okay, okay, you have that now, next, okay. Only for that.
And at this time, we go to liaison updates.
Yeah, it's, it was just recently posted in Orlando, the road slash landfill superintendent. It'll have its normal posting time, I don't know if that's thirty days, I don't actually know that answer on that part, but it's going to be filled as soon as we can.
Okay, so the vacancy announcements, it'll-
Yeah, it's posted on the board, it's posted on the website, yep, we want to get it filled as soon as we can.
Hey, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, I'll go ahead, first and foremost, I just wanted to publicly, because we were asking publicly, thank Commissioner Winters for his work on the speed limit signs here north of town. I've now had to throw my brakes way out of town as I'm coming in at sixty-five, slowed down to fifty-five about it. Old Smoky Road are just beyond it, so thank you very much for getting that done. It's good for everybody. We had a water, water resources, state water resources board task force meeting yesterday, it was held at the Capitol, I, needless to say, was not there. I called in for a little bit of it, continuing to participate. The folks in the governor's office, when I tried to get out and have either Alan or Craig appointed, have asked me to stay involved, so I'm going to participate from afar. I probably will go over to one of the final meetings in October, we have to wrap it up by the first part of November, the recommendations from the task force. ALC Subcommittee, Forest Management Subcommittee, we made a decision, you two gentlemen supported my recommendation this past spring to not pay forty-two hundred dollars in dues. We've been a member, we are a member of ALC, we're a member of ALC Public Lands and all the committees, but to not pay the forty-two hundred dollars in addition to that for this subcommittee, and been involved in that over the years, we, we remain a member of it, we just aren't a voting member by not paying Gil Riddell, who is the person who oversees that committee along with Public Lands from the ALC group, has reached out. I recommended that he talk to the both of you about it, we had a good visit yesterday. And I told him that strategically, we have plans, we're working with other entities, but more importantly, from my point of view, having been involved in this now at the county government level, we have duplication all over the place, doesn't mean their efforts don't make a difference, but we have the Eastern Oregon Counties Association, we have ALC Public Lands, of which we pay seven thousand and something annually dues to, this is a subcommittee to that. We have Western Interstate Region that works on this, we have Macon Public Lands that work on this, we have forty states that are SRS states that are all working on this, we have forty-nine states and three territories that are pill states that are working on this, it's covered. So my vote, if it's brought back to the board, will remain the same, which is to not pay the dues. It's not a negative towards that entity or that group. Gil and I, as I said, we've been good friends, we had a great conversation, he understood, what he appreciated is the fact that we're actually working on solutions. There's five other counties embedded in there besides Lake County that have not paid their dues this year, that was the first time this has happened. But I think everybody's feeling the pinch of so much duplicate representation. And we could make the case, well, the more the merrier, well, everyone that's involved in that's involved in some other group that's also working on this, so I will just leave it at that.
Well, I want to comment on that, Dan, if you don't mind.
I don't, I'm going to talk about filling SRS, but-
Go ahead. Well, this board has been, been pretty darn, I would say, the lead on forest health, not, not beating the drum, we want to get the revenue, go out there and cut every tree out there. And I don't mean that going over the top, but we've been pretty darn good at our, our mission, our philosophy or whatever from this board, is we, I think we, by all three of us, we talk that way, healthy forests, water densities, trees and all these things, and a component will be the logging part of it, where the subgroup is pushed a lot of times to, we need to log, we need that revenue, and we don't need the SRS type thing. And so I, I will just let you know, I'm comfortable with the decision that we made as a board. I don't put near as much time in it as you do, because I'm comfortable on the forest side that you do a lot of, but we double over on so many things, we double over as far as from Macon to there's also the Eastern Oregon Pill Group or whatever, I'm comfortable with state program.
Well, Commissioner, I really-
I'll listen to what Gil has to say.
I appreciate those comments, and I think you just made me think of something that needs to be said, because this board does support appropriate forest management for the right reasons, forest health, forest resiliency. And what you just commented on, and I told Gil that yesterday, I said, I've had it up to here with the louder voices in that group indicating that SRS is welfare payments. I've had it up to here with members of that group saying, we need to go log because of the money it's going to return to counties, it's totally irresponsible. And they have a right to their opinion, as you alluded to, but we don't have to support that opinion. And I think this board's on record as supporting doing the right thing, so thank you for more clearly stating that. You said it politically correct, if any of our fellow commissioners out there in TV land or, or, whatever.
Radio land.
White land, yeah, watch this, I'll probably get some nastograms, but that's okay.
Sorry, Dan.
No, that was just fine, Pill and SRS though, just as a quick comment, I'll, I'll make it quick, the Anne Crumrin, our treasurer, has a passion for, you know, those types of things. And so I've enlisted her help and been working with Riley Machu from Congressman Walden's office. We think we're on to something, she's already put together, I think, five states comparison on a per acre basis, even though regular private land property tax is paid on a per thousand, we're trying to compare apples to apples. And so at the district meeting coming up, the ALC here, our district meeting, will be presenting some information to our group, but in the meantime, Congressman Walden's office is very intrigued, which we, we're hoping we could get to that point on the discussion on Pill specifically, but it leads over into the secure rural schools, at least short term. Because as you start to do the analysis, every county, literally, from a payment standpoint, with the veteran lands that make up Pill are not treated the same. In Oregon, the range is from twenty-four cents in Harney County, thirty-one in Lake County, all the way up to two sixty-two an acre. The only reason that counties get penalized like ours and Harney's is because of population cap, but we still have the same infrastructure needs. So, it, it's really pretty exciting to think that we've hit upon something that's starting to resonate with our members of Congress to take another look at this. And in the interim, I believe we may get some support for an extension of SRS, short term, and I would refer to that short term as two or three years perhaps, until we can work through this whole Pill issue, payment load tax, thank you.
Yeah, I wonder if you're about Congressman Walden, town hall being two times, twice ago, the subject player came up and had any information that it's the equation that has a population that is take disparity to low population numbers. So I'm glad that he picked up the, taking that on.
Well, when I met with him back in May, when I was back there for those three different meetings, and we sat in his office and got one-on-one time with him, which was really appreciated, he said the same thing about SRS, Pill is that fair amount of payment. And that was probably after the time before town hall meeting. And Riley actually had called in, he conversed, and then from there, he's had a new awareness that it's not fair and it's not equitable.
Not last year, although long, except the concept should be spread across all the federal minister lands. Basically, it just don't feel like national lands. The refuges, or amount of refuges, has a payment of share cost program. And National Forest Lands used to have a temporary seat, now they have zero.
Which, that's a little bit, Commissioner, than this number, here the form, because we received SRS, we never thought of those lands as being part of it, but in the Pill formula, it is the National Forest Lands, it's the BLM and it's part service. And as you alluded to, the refuge is paid a refuge Pill payment. And I've actually been working with a group out of headwaters economics, they've been really working hard to change even the refuge formula to get a better, more fair payment. So, as we go forward, if we don't receive SRS, those prior payments is essentially what it is, our three point six million acres is paid at thirty-one cents an acre, that's where we come up with our one point one million per Pill. And since we won't have that offset, you go to the formula and it changes it, except the population cap caps it right where we're at.
And that's what we need to work on.
Yep.
It's actually quite interesting, as we all get more educated on the whole formula for Pill. And what's really, and I'm with Ken, Anne taking on the burden, she's a numbers person and she thrive on this, but to educate a congressman the way you guys are and the staff is pretty interesting also, that, that whole Pill thing is very complex, very complex.
Population goes back to early creation of our government, the greatest good for the greatest meaning. So even at state level, we get funds based on population, 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 which is always a disadvantage to the low population counties. Huge geographical area, they don't take into account the logistics and the administration. Only population, so that's what population, that's likely to be addressed.
I, I totally agree, we hit the nail on the head, Commissioner, but Williams Rose is an example, just for a short discussion, they also base funding on roads, on the number of miles. But yeah, we go flip over on the federal side to Pill, where we're one of the highest acreage, acreage counties in Oregon, you know, and in several states of federal lands, and so it is only population, it's not that acreage, it's not that comparison mileage that takes place. But I think the bottom line is, we've gotten their attention, they're very receptive. Riley called me yesterday morning, Riley Machu, we talked for an hour on this, he sent us his stuff, Anne and I, we're continuing to crank it out, information, we'll have quite a discussion, I'm sure, in our district meeting.
And for the audience, Riley is a field representative for Congressman Walden, how to that?
I guess, try to keep everything short as I can, Kristy's here, our landfill exemption, we're working on that with Mark Inger, looking at the landfill closure plan. Just emailed him this morning and I didn't get to Kristy too, Kristy is my go-to person at the road department on all the things. We'll have to have a design for the closure before we can get a permit for the extension for the small landfill exemption. And so Mark Inger's working on that, we'll have to have, once he gets it put together, we'll have to have some engineering done for the slope and the grade and all that. Going to hopefully have him work directly with the local engineer to do that, and a recommendation for him to do that and have our thing in writing and get that going, so that's in process. We just got, and Kristy's reviewed it, haven't reviewed it yet, on a monitoring of our wells out there, Mark Inger's got that back to us. And Kristy, can, we need to get that to D E Q right away?
It's already on, it's already in there.
It's already there, so we're going forward with that, continuing on that out there. Did have a question about taking Asbestus at the landfill, no, we do not have an Asbestus plan. If anybody asks him, we're not accepting Asbestus out there. And so if you hear something out there, there's a little bit, and I know one of the, one of the contractors was asking a lot of questions, I talked to them, our contractor and other waste contractor, let them know we're not accepting it at this point. If we ever come up with a plan, then we will consider it, but not right now. Like I said yesterday, I went three hundred and forty-something miles around Lake County, the two guys I was with, when we got done, they said, wow, you've got a big county, and I said, yes, we did, and you only seen part of it. So, it'll be, I believe it'll be positive on these kiosks and these map stations. I told them there will probably be some vandalism, they understand that. And I'm one that promotes, go ahead and put it, if there's vandalism, then we address it afterwards, then to just say no. Like I said, keep them out of our program, be pushing our snow, and our graders are going to be pulling our ditches, so that went well. No help, talking with Jay this morning, we have a couple other things yet to do, a little bit, have to get a hold of state, I think Denise got the email also, Jay's going to take care, get a hold of state, make sure all of our contracts are taken care of. One question to Jay was- One question to Jay was, and I haven't asked Denise yet, but it's on the advisory committee. I've been asked a few questions on that. We have to follow up and find out what the ORS's are. I think we still appoint the advisory committee. And I do know that the advisory committee's wanting to know who they report to and all this, because they have to redo the bylaws, because all the bylaws say Lake County on and on, and so on. So, gonna put a little bit of time towards that, make sure.
Can I add one thing on the no help? We're gonna have a lot of IT stuff that's gonna take a little bit of time to transfer over.
Right.
Just so you guys know, we'll have, we've got a few months of work. And that part of it may still stay, have to stay on our system, so, just so everyone's aware.
Just make sure it's a smooth transition, so it's not a gap.
Right. That's what we're, we're looking for.
So, Saturday, I did see Commissioner Fisher there in North Lake for the festival up there, the music festival. They have quite a nice event up there. At the same time, I talked with Carl Shumway, met with him. Wasn't planned accidentally. He caught me on the corner, so we went and had a cup of soup and visited Brown the nuisance slash code slash planning ordinance. I told him the full board's keeping this alive. We had a meeting, talked about it last week. I think that what we need to do, because we have north and south both, we have a lot of issues going on on the nuisance site. Code enforcement side on the building, he's in agreement. We're good, pretty good. We have a form letter we send out, and people, Jennifer does that. On the planning side, Carl is not happy with on the planning side. He expressed that again. I said, well, we're working on that. We'll have that discussion. His view on the planning might not be exactly the same view as our planning directors, but we'll work through that. But I would like to keep that up in the front, appreciate you bringing it back in the last meeting. I'm just trying to keep it alive. I have some thoughts of, I, I think it's appropriate for it to land probably in that whole department, in the building planning department for the nuisance site of it. And I think the code and the planning already is taking care of on the nuisance site. We're gonna have to step that up. With that, with that said, we have, we have a couple places right here that came into existence in Lake area. And we have some in the north that I think maybe we ought to give direction and have our planning director now go ahead and send letters out to those places. So, I'm sure you guys have heard from the public, same as I have. So, our process now is, if we get complaints, the written complaints, we address them. But I think these are bad enough that we are gonna have to address them without written complaints. And so, I just sort of wanted to, but not from the board. Your ladies, for that department, that I know you're gonna be gone next couple days, I'll go down and have Darwin start that. If the board's agreement to.
I agree.
Totally.
I'm not gonna mention the exact location. I'm gonna, you know, which one's there.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So, maybe you were gonna give an update on it, I hope.
No, no, no. Yeah, there's no need for us to cross out management addresses at this time.
Right.
It's inappropriate.
But I, I think that these are extreme enough to go ahead without a written complaint to have the landowners know if I was. And thank you. I will give with, I think that's a great suggestion to talk to the committee people. I'll work on that before tomorrow. You'll be gone. If I talk with them, you would get a chance to review these roads if you need to, take a look at them on Google Earth or whatever, or if you know anybody that think would be supportive or opposition, that they bring some forward. I'd like to, they'll act on those tomorrow, just so they can get their MAP started. We've been waiting on the MAP for quite some time.
My ladies, I'm, last week, I was gone most of the week to the Dallas for our education conference. I've been kind of, aside from the education, early learning, UNTS, Stellon, science, technology, engineering, math, and regional collaborative group, been kind of busy with Sage for us, but that's for the time being. Sage Con one has passed. I'm waiting for Sage Con two. And horses are off the range, so I'm trying to reengage with the education for preschool young kids. It was actually a pretty good conference. On the musical thing, I'd just like to make a public acknowledgement to John Flaherty. I mean, Parkman there over four or five years, but we haven't really, say, pat on the back to John Flaherty and others who's supported it. That is a deep asset to Christmas Valley.
Oh, beautiful, yeah.
And this afternoon, I'll, I won't be here tomorrow, as mentioned, in Salem for a telecommunication meeting with FirstNet and Oregon Viz and Regional Solution. Again, FirstNet, FirstNet is First Responder Emergency Communication to plus area. And we've been trying to get cell phone coverage out there for years, and keep getting it's cost prohibitive. So, we'll be looking at dovetailing, is it feasible to dovetail? We've got one system going in with infrastructure. Can it be engineered and accommodate another provider like internet or cell phone? So, we're just needing to brainstorm and see if we can leverage different communication into one infrastructure system. And then, I'll be talking to AOC on the, on that federal lands payment. And hopefully, hit a miss and get a meeting with the Oregon Bankers Association. Alan Parks and I have been working, trying to get, reestablish a banking system in Christmas Valley and keep coming up with a grid law of cost effectiveness. So, lately, C, not C D O, but President of the Banking Association was the key person to engage with, to get some ideas. A lot of the impediment is federal regulations, of which we can use that information to go back to a congressional delegation if there's some regulation that could be softened or weakened or shifted, you know, without alleviating the intent. So, I'll be getting back probably on Thursday on, on that trail. On the speed limit signs out here, appreciate it very much. We're still working on Summer Lake. We got the speed limit down to fifty-five, but when people are going, when it's feeling sixty-five and people are at the race speed of seventy-five, they don't slow down to fifty-five. But we're still trying to get some signs, so, Ginger and I have been working on maybe a small grant. I mean, it's, it's a very small amount of money. But when it comes down, when you get things put together, and I'll be stopping at Summer Lake today, you might go. Is, because it's an unincorporated community, the OARs, the county needs to submit a request to ODOT. If it's in municipality, the town board, like pays it, like people being incorporated. So, I need, wanna get back, and we start working on the OAR request. I think ODOT, which was the leading point on that, and hopefully, it's a replacement, it's very receptive also. We just put in a sign out that psychologically tell people that you're coming upon a congested area.
I, I, I think you, you're hitting the nail on the head. And the other thing you've been working on there, Ken, that would help that, but it's, it's a little controversial, is the visual. There's so many trees in brush there. Just yesterday, I, I think I slowed down there, almost had somebody come out in front of me. It's a visual, and even the store owner would probably have more business if you see that there's a store there, and you'd get there. But signings would be great.
Signing is the first step, and tree trimming would be the next.
Yep. So, I have a couple other things.
Go ahead.
I can't thank the road department and the crew out there enough. They have just done an exceptional job. All the thought is help. We are just, every day, they're just clicking right along, keeping everything down. Today, they're at the fairgrounds, doing some patching basically there for safety issues with hot mix. We, they will, the road department will be reimbursed out of money as we set aside. We had to at least get it blade patched, or I think they may be using a pager on one area there. They will do an excellent job. If you see our road crew, tell them thank you for that. They, they are excellent bunch of men and women that's out there all the way through, so can't, can't thank them enough. The Federal Highways Project out at Plush is, we have the chip sill to go. A week from today, we'll be chipping out there, or the week of the twenty.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, we'll be chipping out there. Christie stayed on top of the crushing site of it. We've had to have a couple extensions for, for new construction, but the chip rock's gonna be there, be done, be ready to go. As with any of it, there's always some uniqueness to it. So, I did make a round with one of the guys last week, is he doing water, he's a lane, getting a second width, a stabilizing base. That'll set through the winter, the chip sill on top of it to keep it secured. And this fall, they'll be doing culverts up on Dog Lake Lane. And so, please tell them all thank you when you get a chance. They're just doing excellent job. This week, I'll be gone Thursday, Friday, before the OTC, Oregon Climate, Oregon Transportation Commission. Pretty encouraged about that, getting in front of them. We will actually, the two are also Black Mountains, so looking forward to that. So, I probably forgot a bunch of other things, but I didn't want to forget the road department, because I know how appreciative you guys are also.
They are an excellent crew.
What everybody's doing out there.
Brad, who's the interim, do you have an interim road manager?
Our foreman out there is Delbert Davis.
What's your name?
Delbert Davis. He's our foreman. Dusty Khan is also stepping up and doing a lot of the administrative side. The only thing that I am doing in Orlando is by ORS. I'm the road official for the statute. With that, where I have experience with the road department and everything, I'm working very close with the office A and with the guys that's keeping it running, with support from my fellow commissioners. It's just, we're very pleased that these guys, gals have stepped up. Projects are just going right along.
That hosting closes on September seventh.
September seventh?
September seventh, it closes.
So, you, Orlando, you'll need to get your application in by the seventh of September.
I'm, I'm not looking for a job, thank you.
Oh, okay. I, yeah.
I, I think it does need to be noted, just, maybe this isn't the place, but you're not receiving compensation. Filling in.
Right.
Okay, you said that, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
I'm a commissioner, thank you, yeah. No, it's just part of my duties.
Exactly.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll tip to that. Thanks, appreciate it.
And that's a bummer, isn't it? That's a bummer, and it turned out before today.
It's really, it's really not.
I'm just kidding.
It's really not Orlando. It all comes with the position.
As county commissioner, whatever load you carry on your shoulders is what you carry.
We all take on the duties to keep the county going.
Oh, Ann, I owe you a apology, Christie. When I was gone last week on the education conference, I was gonna come back and tack base with you for, give you a signature, and I was so.
And that's okay.
Soon somebody else took care of it.
Yes, Brad. I didn't know who to send it to, so I was confused.
We got it covered, yeah.
We're still learning. Where, which things go where?
Any of us can sign, but usually, they lay us on first, or.
The road official in this case, yeah. I never, I'm, I'm sorry. I should email and let you know it's taken care of.
Yeah, me too. I dropped the ball on that. We all, the ball's still up there.
Let the job got done, that's.
I dropped it a ball. We're not a basketball team out there, we're road, road.
I'm soccer league.
Soccer?
Yeah.
I know, sometimes it feels like rugby.
That's true. Just for a little note aside, I'm a strong supporter, I didn't play soccer in high school, I was a football jock. But soccer is an international sport, and it gives our kids, it gets them engaged, it gives them a broader global perspective. So, I appreciate the school, all the schools stepping up and buying the soccer. Anything else for the good of the order? Then, nine forty-five, session closed.